Welcome to the Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll? Sorry.
Okay, I need to turn my mic on, so.
Uh, will Mayor Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Rommel?
Here.
Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Preschlack?
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, my last full meeting of the city council, and along with Alderman Rommel and Alderman Morris. We'll all be departing after the next meeting, or in the middle of the next meeting, I guess I should say, so, uh, so this is a bit of a, a bit of a special occasion. First item on the agenda is comments by the mayor, and, um, I'm gonna repeat some information that first, that, uh, the Finance Chair Morris presented a little while ago, um, to the Finance Committee, but not very many people were here to hear that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over it again. Uh, today, uh, the city issued ten point eight million dollars of ten-year bonds, uh, to support the Deerpath Athletic Fields improvements. Moody's rerated the city again at AAA with a stable outlook. Uh, the interest cost achieved was two point seven three percent on these bonds. To put that in perspective, the ten-year Treasury, US Treasury rate today was three point six one percent. So we are almost a full percentage point less than the US government is able to borrow at right now. So I think that says something about, uh, the caliber of our financial condition, or the status of our financial condition. I'd like to read a few little outtakes from Moody's comments, uh, because I think they're very instructive. Uh, first, they say, "The city's financial position is exceptional across its governmental and business-type activities. Leverage is moderate, and adjusted fixed costs are low. The stable outlook reflects our expectation that the city's financial position will remain robust, and our view that long-term liabilities will remain moderate, but not materially grow because of strong pension contribution practices." Um, I don't think I've ever read a Moody's report that's quite that complimentary about any company, any municipality, anything. I mean, it's just extraordinary. And I think, um, having been around this issue since two thousand and eleven, uh, coming out of the Great Recession, this is the result of a very conscious effort over, uh, now twelve years, uh, to put the city in a position where it's truly got a fortress, uh, of a balance sheet, and where we really do have a financial moat around us, uh, that can't be breached by, uh, the vicissitudes of the people in Springfield, or COVID, or any other sort of financial calamity that can happen, or could happen. And, uh, it's a testament to probably four different city councils, and three or four mayors, and, uh, and I just think, and an incredibly strong city finance staff, led by Elizabeth Hollob, and of course, two of our city managers. So, um, and, to top it all off, we remain, uh, with the lowest property tax rates. Really, I haven't found, I've found one other community, Oak Brook, that has, uh, a similar tax rate, and, uh, otherwise, nobody that I've found, and this is, I've looked several times, in the whole metro area, has, has a property tax rate as low as Lake Forest. So, certainly the lowest in Lake County and on the North Shore. So, uh, so thanks to all the people that have contributed to that, and to our taxpayers who have, uh, been willing to continue to, uh, to pay their taxes, and, um, uh, you know, here we are. It's, it's a great vote of confidence, and, and it's proving out in actual financial benefits to us in the form of these very low interest rates. Uh, second item on my list today is, uh, this afternoon, we had the ribbon-cutting for Hometown Coffee and Juice. Uh, they are open for business, they are thriving, uh, it is, has, the place has a fabulous vibe to it, it's really a pleasant place to go, uh, the food is good, the coffee's good, the juice is good, the smoothies are good, and the people are super nice, uh, and, and they've hired a lot of local children, you know, local kids, uh, they've hired some former employees from Caputo's that a lot of people know, and, uh, it's really been very well-received, and we're delighted to have them as our tenth new restaurant, uh, that have, that's opened up in Lake Forest in the last three years. So, we are really becoming a dining destination, and there are two more, uh, sophisticated restaurant operators who are, um, I don't wanna say too much, because I don't wanna jinx it, but they're, they're closing in on a couple of long vacant spaces that I think people will be delighted to see reactivated. So, uh, we're, we're adding vibrancy to our downtown, uh, we're providing more dining opportunities for people, uh, these were things that, that we heard loud and clear at the early stages of, uh, my term as mayor, and, uh, thankfully, it's, uh, it's coming to, coming to pass. Next thing I wanted to mention is just a reminder that the first ward meeting is tomorrow at seven PM at Gordon, uh, and the second ward meeting, we've already done wards three and four, the second ward meeting is next Tuesday at seven PM at Gordon, so please, please plan to attend and, uh, hear what your alderman have to say. The next item on my, uh, list of comments is a resolution of sympathy for former Mayor James E. Swarthout, uh, and, uh, I'd like to read the resolution, please. Whereas on behalf of the City of Lake Forest, the city council expresses its profound sadness at the passing of James E. Swarthout at the age of ninety-four on March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas James E. Swarthout was a lifelong resident of Lake Forest, Jim and his beloved wife Terry lived in the house he built for ten thousand dollars in West Park, in the West Park neighborhood for sixty-seven years, and whereas together Jim and Ch, Jim and Terry raised four children in the home, Jimmy, Tom, Dave, and Cindy, and over the years, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, extended family, and many friends were welcomed into their home, the door was always open. And whereas James E. Swarthout served the community in ways too numerous to mention, offering his wisdom, enthusiasm, and time to the city's recreation board, the North Shore Sanitary District, and the Water Plant Ad Hoc Committee, to name just a few, and whereas James E. Swarthout served as mayor of the City of Lake Forest from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen seventy-eight, and under his leadership, much was accomplished, always in the interest of looking out for the long-term good of the entire city. Notably, the Audit Committee was established to watch over and safeguard the city's finances, a referendum to support the construction of the city's recreation center was passed, and the comprehensive land use plan was adopted. After his mayoral term ended, Jim joined with others in support of a refer, a referendum for Lake Forest Beach. And whereas James E. Swarthout's public service went well beyond his elected positions, including serving as a volunteer fireman in his early years, protecting residents and property in the community, Jim treasured his souvenirs from that time and took great pride and joy in retelling stories of those days. Whereas in two thousand and four, James E. Swarthout was awarded the city's highest honor, the Larry Temple Public Service Award, an award that recognizes a living person who embodies the true spirit of the community, giving and devoted, a person who leaves the community better, a person who leaves an enduring legacy of public service. And whereas James E. Swarthout personally believed in and invested in the community, excuse me, specifically in the Central Business District, where he built buildings, improved infrastructure, and over the years brought in various businesses to provide goods and services to meet the needs of Lake Forest residents and visitors alike, Jim's vision and investment continues to give back to the community even today with the recent opening of Hometown Coffee in a building that Jim and his family built. And whereas Jim was often recognized by his many, by many as he drove his red truck to the compost center or to Egg Harbor, he was quick with a smile, a hug, and words of encouragement, and he took the time to get to know people. Running into Jim often made someone's day, he made people feel valued, inspired, and respected. And whereas James E. Swarthout leaves a remarkable legacy, and will long be remembered by his family and his friends for his many accomplishments and contributions to the City of Lake Forest, more importantly, Jim will long be remembered for who he was, a hard-working, kind, and humble man, who loved his wife, children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, and his entire extended family, and cared deeply for his community. They don't make him like Jim Swarthout anymore. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Forest in session I, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, hereby expresses its deep regret and sincere sympathy to all the members of the Swarthout family. Be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Mrs. Swarthout and the Swarthout family with the copy, with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
Second.
Okay, voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And I see a couple of members of the family, uh, any, any interest in making a few comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Tom Swarthout, and I'm the second of the four children, and my sister Cindy and my brother Jimmy are here, and I think most of you on the council have been in that home that he built for ten thousand dollars, and wanna reassure everybody that he paid it off. He, he, he valued nothing more than, than his family, but secondly, serving his community, just like all of you, and so, he, he breathed it every day. He really, really enjoyed being part of the community, but he felt it was really important to give back, and every one of you have done just that, and for that, I thank you, and our family thanks you. He wasn't always so perfect, I would, I reminded people that, you know, when he grew up, three hundred horses and three hundred mules would go by his house on Old Elm Road every day from Fort Sheridan, where the cavalry was still in existence, and he would graze on the west side of Lake Forest. But when I'm in the city, the city hall, and, uh, the fire station just a block away, uh, in the middle of the night, my brother Davy and my brother Jimmy, and he broke into the abandoned fire station and stole the fire pole, and, uh, 'cause he heard a rumor that they were gonna cut it up, uh, and give it away as, as a, a special, uh, gift to those who were volunteer firemen, and he was one of many in the community. And now his most prized possession is that little twelve-inch pipe. Um, so, I wanna thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you all for serving, and I wanna thank the community, and Kathy, I know she put together the resolution, she's, the city, uh, really stood up for us at, at the service, uh, fire truck was out in front of the, 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 Gordon, where he went to school, uh, a police squad car, the fire chief, the police chief attended, it was just spectacular. Kathy was the first one who called her up, "Is there any way I can get a portrait?" Because we don't have a portrait, and we were here, and we took it down, um, without anybody's permission, so, um...
No permit?
I hope, uh, I hope she doesn't get reprimanded for that. Everybody in the city really helped out, and it really, really meant a lot to us, so, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll certainly miss your father's big smile and happy pats on the back and encouragement, and, uh, he was, he was a, one of a kind, so, thanks, Tom. All right, the next item on the agen, the agenda from the mayor is, uh, the Lake Forest Whereas the McKinlock Post two sixty-four of the American Legion has undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in celebration of Lake Forest Day on Wednesday, August second, two thousand and twenty-three, with a view to bringing together the people of our city in furtherance of civic interest and advancement of community fellowship, and whereas the McKinlock Post two sixty-four of the American Legion honors Lake Forest residents, employees, neighbors, and friends by saluting the Lake Forest Community Service Organizations that do so much for the city as this year's Lake Forest Day theme. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed, that said Lake Forest Day celebration is declared to be a city fair, and in fur, and in pursuance thereof, and Tuesday, August first, two thousand and twenty-three, and Wednesday, August second, two thousand and twenty-three, shall be observed as a holiday in the City of Lake Forest, and our people are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits and gather in West Park in a spirit of comradeship and goodwill in support of the ideals of our city. We don't have to take any action on this, but, uh, I know, uh, we have a representative from the McKinlock Post here to receive this proclamation.
Good evening, I'm Tom Markes, uh, commander of the post, and, uh, we are here to say thank you to the city as well. It's a partnership that has endured over more than a hundred years, and we couldn't do it without you, and you'd have a hard time doing it without us. So it's a pretty good deal, all the way around. Uh, all we have to do is have the weatherman cooperate, and it's gonna be another great year, so thank you very much, and thank you for the proclamation.
Next item on the agenda from the mayor here is, uh, resolution of appreciation for former Fourth Ward Alderman Raymond P. Bushman. You read the, uh, resolution here? Let me get, get to the right spot. Lots of paper. Whereas Raymond P. Bushman served as a member of the city council as Fourth Ward Alderman, and as a member of the Finance Committee from December two thousand and sixteen through April two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas during his tenure on the city council, Ray served on the Public Works Committee, the Personnel Compensation and Administration Committee, and the Property and Public Lands Committee, and at various times was the city council liaison to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department, Lake Forest Open Lands Association, and the city's legal committee, and whereas, prior to his time on the city council, Ray served on the Building Review Board from two thousand and three to two thousand and nine, and in two thousand and five was appointed chairman and served in that role until the end of his term. He also served on the Legal Committee from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, and is chairman of the Legal Committee beginning in two thousand and twelve. And whereas Ray was always prepared for meetings, he did his homework and more, and took his appointed and elected positions seriously, and whereas Ray listened to residents, asked questions, and often took up causes that his constituents believed were important, and whereas Ray did not shy away from taking positions that at times differed from the majority, he spoke his mind with attention to details, always with the best interests of the community and its residents in mind. And whereas Ray took particular interest in ensuring the vitality of the Waukegan Road Business District for the long term, and whereas Raymond P. Bushman devoted much time and careful attention to preserving the character of the City of Lake Forest and the quality of life that residents enjoy here. And whereas the citizens of Lake Forest recognize and deeply appreciate Ray's dedication and service to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to Raymond P. Bushman for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, which shall be spread upon the permanent records of the city council. So, we have a souvenir to provide to you.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a motion?
Okay, sorry, you know what, it's not, okay, I didn't think there was one.
So moved, I moved to...
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There being none, the motion passes.
Before...
Yeah, and Ray, before I let you take, take the podium, we do have a couple of gifts
that we'd like to provide to you in recognition of your service to the community. First is a tree certificate whereby we will plant a tree in your honor at a location of your choosing in the Fourth Ward, and, so, you can decide on what, on what the ideal location is. And second, in keeping with city tradition, our Public Works Department has provided a gift. We'll ask that you open it here.
It's gotta be Bushman Boulevard.
I think I will get this.
Is it a lane or a lane or a sign?
I'd say Boulevard.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna see.
Lane.
Lane.
You gotta, you need to, you gotta look at the other side, the other side, too. We're gonna, we're gonna put that up, when that, when that right turn lane gets built, that sign's going up, at least for a couple of days.
You know, uh, I've, uh, started, uh, having meetings here in City Hall in two thousand and oh-three, and it was Building Review Board, and we sat there, it was a formal sessions, uh, and so over twelve years, I've had meetings here, never once have I been here at the po, at the podium, so to speak, so, uh, this is a new, new thing for me. But, uh, I do wanna thank everyone, I will be very brief on my comments. Uh, again, it's been an honor to serve, uh, privileged to work with all of you, uh, for the three that are terming off, I, you know, things happened from a personal standpoint, that the move came up a little earlier than, uh, the changing of the guards, so I appreciate your cooperating with me and recognizing that, and I will wish you the best, particularly those continuing to serve, and those I know here in the audience that will be joining this august group, uh, as city council. So, again, thank you very much.
Oh, no, 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 you have to stay here until the end of the meeting. That's, that's part of the ceremony.
I know, yeah, I've been doing that.
Enjoy your party. Okay, well, that's all the mayor has to say for the night. So, uh, I'll now turn it over to comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council, good evening. For tonight's community spotlight, I'm pleased to welcome Carol Summerfield, the executive director of the Lake Forest and Lake Bluff History Center, to, to join us this evening. Usually when Carol's here, it's to talk about something going on inside the building, and I think as most know, she's really done a tremendous job in building out, um, both the displays, the programming, and other offerings, uh, within the History Center, um, and, um, as we heard last month, at, part of one of our presentations, they, they serve as the city's archivist as well, and have done a tremendous job in helping us preserve and protect, uh, historic records for the city. But tonight, actually, Carol's here to talk about, uh, what's happening outside the building, which is a bit unusual, and, uh, I'm not going to, uh, steal her thunder in talking about the garden initiative, but I just want to note, uh, that our excitement for the project, both in terms of what it will offer for visitors to the History Center, but also for the important stormwater management benefits that it will provide, uh, to the surrounding area and neighborhood. So, with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Carol and let her share her story.
Well, thank you again for having me, and thank you to the mayor and to the members of city council. So I will be brief on this, but the goal really, over the course of the next couple of years, is to completely renovate the grounds of the garden, and this started when, during COVID, we realized we were sitting on a lot of land that nobody was using, and it seemed a waste, and a way for us to actually engage the public whether or not we were open for business. But along with that, as everybody in the neighborhood knows, um, there's been a lot of issues with the rainwater and water runoff, and so one of the first things we're gonna be working on is mitigating the water on the land in order to absorb it into the parking lot, and to repair where the water goes, so it, um, reduces the, um, load on both the sewer line, and then on the, um, increasingly sinking front sidewalk that we have. The goal really is to demonstrate, um, proper, um, stewardship of the land, and one of the things we're able to do in putting this forward is to actually put signage up within the garden that allows visitors to understand that they could do this in their homes as well. So it's a way to model behavior that allows everyone to understand things that they can do, um, both large and small scale, on their own properties. Um, the land stewardship really begins with this parking lot, and the goal is to remove all of the impermeable, um, pavement, and then actually put impermeable pavers with an eighteen-inch bed underneath that'll absorb several thousand gallons of water during any rainstorm, and actually slow that, um, seepage back into the sewer line, and actually become a passive feed for the gardens. Um, we will also create permeable paths that people can walk, um, about in the gardens, um, throughout the year. Um, one of the things about this, um, property is that it's got a unique topography, we face Triangle Park, we also, um, run, um, we're across the street on Washington from a ravine, and my lovely blue arrows show you all the ways the water flows into our property, and the one way it flows out, and part of the goal is, again, to create a more organic way to manage all of that. We have, um, been working with Craig Bergman Landscape Design on this, they've been fabulous partners, and then we hired Black &amp; Black to basically do the civil engineering plans. All of these are on display at the museum if you'd like to come see them. We also have a little bit about the history of, uh, landscape design and architecture, and why it is so incredibly important to tell this story. Lake Forest has always played a disproportionately large role in the way landscape design is partnered with architecture, and it's time to tell that story. Thank you. I told you I'd be brief.
And as a reminder to the council, a, a city contribution towards this project is included on your omnibus agenda for consideration tonight.
Questions for Carol? Alderman Rommel?
I just have a comment to make. Thank you for incorporating all of the environmental elements into this garden, and especially in a public place such as this, it really can serve as a demonstration of what can be accomplished with environmentally sensitive, uh, design and landscape architecture. So, thank you very much for this project, I think it's very important, and hopefully our residents will take advantage of an opportunity to go over there and see it when it's done, and I, and I hope you'll have something explaining all of the wonderful features of this garden, so that people can read about it and incorporate some of it, so thank you.
You're welcome, we will have both information online and then at the site, to ensure that it is educational as well as pretty.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to thank you for the tremendous job you've been doing over the years. It's gotten better and better, and the institution is such a valuable resource for the community. So thank you. And this is a big step. So I'm looking forward to seeing the gardens and the results. It'll make a big difference, and it looks terrific.
Well, thank you, and thank you for being supporters. It's been a joy of a job, I have to say.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I'd like to say, too, that you touched on the importance of landscape architecture and design in the history of Lake Forest. I think it fits very nicely with your mission. You know, landscape design is something that this town is famous for across the country and the world, and it gets very little attention except from, you know, a small group of people who know that. And, you know, it was one of the first master-planned, landscape-designed communities in the country. And so it fits that this is gonna be an important message for you to be sending. And I think the city's gonna benefit, too, because I don't know if anybody's looked at the sidewalks around there, but they're all sinking, and they get ice all over them in the wintertime, and they can't be kept clear. And so it's a donation, but there's a benefit to the city from this project. And I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great project. And I love the idea of making it educational and explaining to people, you know, out in the actual gardens, what they're standing on and why it is the way it is. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
And I'd like to echo Alderman Morris's comments, too. The progress your institution has made over the last decade is nothing short of extraordinary. And, you know, you've had a big part in that, and I know you've got a great board, and it's turned out to be one of our real jewels in this famous city full of treasures. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I do have fabulous board and an amazing staff. This is not a one-woman show.
Thanks so much, Carol. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. The first committee report is from the Finance Committee with the approval of the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan for Fiscal Year 2024.
Very good. As chairman of the Finance Committee, I'd like to introduce Director Halib. They've worked steadfastly for months and months to put this budget together. It's a really well-done document, very fiscally sound, and I look forward to showing it to the community. So Director Halib?
Thank you, Mayor Panellion, Finance Chairman Morris, remainder of the city council members. As your Finance Director, I have the honor and privilege to make this presentation this evening, but I would be remiss if I did not mention the countless hours and countless numbers of city staff throughout the organization and all operating departments who contribute to the development of the budget and the remaining financial-related documents included in this plan. Staff starts this process in August of each year, so you have, you are seeing the benefit of significant work over the last seven to eight months by both you as a Finance Committee but also for city staff. So Comprehensive Fiscal Plan, what is this? It's far more than the budget. We incorporate in the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan information related to long-term financial planning of the city, goals both organization-wide and in each department. We link the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan to the Five-Year Strategic Plan so that you can clearly identify issues that are planned that relate back to strategic plan initiatives. It includes a lot of information on service levels and personnel, including the Fiscal Year 24 Pay Plan, which is included. And then it does provide the full annual budget for all city funds, both anticipated revenues and expenses for the upcoming fiscal year. I mentioned the amount of time that is taken in developing this document. That's just a chart that shows sort of what we start and the different aspects of the planning process that go on from September through your meeting this evening in April. Lots of time and lots of effort is put into this work. Talked about the integration with the Strategic Plan. We use these icons that signify the six major areas of the Five-Year Strategic Plan, and so that as you go through this document, these icons are used to visually identify for the reader specific initiatives and specific areas in which strategic plan initiatives are discussed. So before we move into the summary of the Fiscal Year 24, I think it's important to talk a little bit about where we think we're going to end up fiscal year 23. We had significant discussion about this at your March Finance Committee Workshop. But the general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. And as you know, for several years, we've used the approach of conservative revenue assumptions, and that has generated operating surpluses at the end of each year that have gone back to specific initiatives as identified by the city council. So what I've provided here is just some very high-level information. So on the left side, on the revenue, this indicates the budget variance anticipated for specific general fund revenue sources. So you can see interest income, income tax, building permits, and gas utility tax are all projected to come in significantly over budget for various reasons. Clearly, interest rates are much different than they were a year ago when we adopted the Fiscal Year 23 budget. That has generated significant additional interest income. Income tax proceeds from the state of Illinois have continued to outpace budget projections as a continuation from fiscal year 22. Building permits based on development activity throughout the city have been good, and gas utility taxes have largely been driven by increased prices that then come through in a utility tax that the city receives. Other than those four revenue sources, I would just note that all other revenue sources in the general fund are generating about a 1% variance from budget. So that's generating a positive additional amount of about $366,000, but other than those four revenues, we're right on target with budget. Combined, though, that is $3.5 million in additional revenue than what we anticipated in the budget. Conversely, on the expense side, we're gonna, we're currently projecting an operating variance of $394,000. That's about 1% of total expenditures. So again, expenses were pretty much right on target. There are clearly some savings in line items and over expenditures and others, but they are accumulating to an operating variance of about $400,000 on the expense side. And then we have the transfers to other funds. So as discussed at the March Finance Committee meeting, we have proposed that $4 million of operating surplus in fiscal year 23 be transferred and dedicated to the Deer Path Park Improvement Project, and that reduced the amount of funding necessary. And you'll again consider that as part of your agenda this evening. As far as the bond sale, the capital improvements of $550,000 were budgeted, and so those are being made as approved in the adopted fiscal year 23 budget. So again, overall projected fiscal year 23 surplus is generating about $4.5 million towards capital. So now we'll take a look at the fiscal year 24 budget. First, we start with a citywide budget of all funds. You can see projected revenue of $118.8 million compared to expenses of $121.5 million. I would just note, I've included the footnote on this slide, that the difference is primarily the $4 million being transferred in fiscal year 23. So that's fiscal year 23 revenue, but fiscal year 24 expense, so there's a little bit of a timing difference there. This pie chart and this pie chart just show the major categories of the revenues and expenses to show how they compare to other revenue sources. Of course, our property tax at 29% of total projected revenue is the primary revenue source, followed closely by charges for services at about 25% of the total. And then expenses, you see by category how those fall out. And just include a note here that the total personnel, which is made up of the salaries and wages, the pension, and the other employment benefits, total about 34% of the total citywide expenses. A significant proportion of the projected expenses this year are in capital, 28%. And as you'll see on a later slide, we are gonna have a record-setting year in fiscal year 24 in capital improvements in the city. Citywide expenses by function, this just takes, again, the $121.5 million, but carves it out a little bit differently so that you can see in millions of dollars how much is budgeted to different functional categories. Some of those are departments and then administration to show what proportion of the total citywide budget is allocated to those different areas. As you know, under generally accepted accounting principles, we are required to manage our financial operations using fund accounting. This is primarily to be able to demonstrate that revenues with legal restrictions are used for the purposes in which they're designated. And so this just shows a graphical presentation of the various funds of the city and how their revenue and expenditures budgeted in fiscal year 24 relate to the total citywide budget. So of course, you see the significant number on the left being the general fund, primary operating fund of the city, and then you can see the relationship of the other funds. And next, since the general fund is a significant portion of the city's overall budget, we've concluded the same kind of breakdown for the general fund revenues and expenses. You'll note a couple differences here. On the revenue side, property tax is 53% of the general fund revenue, so much greater reliance in the general fund on property tax than the citywide budget overall. And similarly, you see a significant difference in personnel expenses in the general fund. Most of your city employees and benefits are budgeted in the general fund, and so personnel costs actually represent 71% of the total general fund expenditure budget. So much greater association of personnel in the general fund budget than overall. A very significant part of the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan development is long-term forecasting. At your November workshop, you look at five-year financial forecasts for capital-related funds. You do the same in March for operating funds. This is just a graphical presentation of the general fund forecast. This shows net before capital or one-time expenditures to give you a comparison of the operating revenues to the operating expenses. Of course, you've got actual for '21 and '22, projected for fiscal year '23, proposed budget for fiscal year '24, and then a forecast for fiscal years '25 through '28, consistent with the trend that goes back probably when George Panellion began as Finance Committee Chair. We do see a crossing of the lines within the five-year financial forecast. This is largely driven by expense growth outpacing revenue growth. And so we use this tool to identify those differences and make choices today that will push that crossover point out further in the future. Again, the green line here shows fund balance reserves. We have a tradition of having substantial, healthy reserves in the general fund to mitigate any unanticipated expenditures that come along or any impacts that the state of Illinois budgetary decisions might have on the city's financial operations and budget. Moving to the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program, this is very exciting. You can see that the fiscal year '24 total is $32.9 million. We thought '23 was busy. '24 is really gonna be busy. And you can see those expenditures over the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program in millions of dollars by source of funding. And so you can see that we have a total of $74.2 million in capital improvements programmed over the five-year period of fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '28. And very exciting is that that is funded in large part by grant funding. The city has been very successful in obtaining grant funding for a number of capital improvement program projects within this five years. We have $11 million in awarded grant funding for those projects. That represents about 15% of the total. And then I would just also call your attention to the total at the bottom of the chart, unfunded projects. So we do have identified projects that are not currently funded, but come on your radar each year as you review those for funding. And I would note that we do have one significant grant that has been recently awarded for Deer Path Streetscape. That is currently included in the non-funded projects, but that grant will allow us next year to look at funding for that project. And we also are working very hard on getting grant funding for the Seminary Ravine Project. So should have even an increase in grant funding coming to us in the future.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Certainly.
There's another source of revenue that doesn't show up here that has been extremely significant over the last couple of years, and that is other agencies that are doing infrastructure work in our community that we don't have to pay for directly. The IDOT project at Deer Path and 41 is the most obvious. We have the ComEd Bridge. We have Metra with the crossover switches, which is about $12 million. Well, Bur Oak we paid for.
Well, we had a grant.
Part of it. But I'm, I'm not talking about grants. My point is that that doesn't show up here.
Right.
Grants are showing up, but other agencies doing work in our community that directly benefits the community have been huge. And that's not by accident. We have pushed very hard with IDOT. We've obviously worked a lot with Metra. These are, these are direct benefits to the community to the tune of over $25 million that's not showing up here. And it contributes to the amount of work that's going on around town and the disruption. But, but we also get the benefits when the work is done. So it's just an important factor. Yes?
Along those lines, we did a property transfer with Open Lands, and they have taken that and created a master ravine renovation in McCormick Ravine all on their own, which is spectacular.
Right. No, that's the, yeah, sort of the private, the public-private partnerships, but actually, that was all private partnership. There wasn't any public part of that. So there's another, it's just, you know, when we look at different ways to fund infrastructure projects, that's been a very large one, and it often goes unidentified. So I wanted to bring it up. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, that's all right. Thank you for bringing that up. Those are significant investments being made within the city that don't appear here because the dollars don't flow through the city's financial budget. And just highlighting some of the notable fiscal year '24 capital projects, of course, Deer Path Park Improvement Project at $16.4 million, Forest Park Bluff Stabilization at 5.85, 5.81, Owani Road Storm Sewer at about $3.8 million, various road, bridge, sidewalks, and curb improvements totaling about $2.9 million, and McLennan Reed Bridge at $1.5 million. So again, total of $32.9 million in capital improvements just in fiscal year '24 alone. So with that, that is, concludes my presentation. I would note that, as we discussed at the City Council Finance Committee meeting immediately preceding this one, I did provide you with a list of changes, significant changes that were made to this plan since your March Budget Workshop. And as recommended by the City Council Finance Committee, we are looking for your approval of the Fiscal Year '24 Comprehensive Fiscal Plan this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Elizabeth? Well, first, we have to have public comment. So is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this, on this presentation, on this document? Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan for Fiscal Year 2024.
So moved.
Everybody's seconding. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Another spectacular job. It's not something you would think might be entertaining or interesting, but it's such a straightforward document to work through. It's, it's just, it's just really, really well done. And I would encourage anybody who's, you know, having trouble sleeping one night to pull it up online and take a, take a, take a run through. The next item on our agenda is, is to grant final approval of the bond ordinance, as we discussed earlier. I'll read the actual, the actual motion. It would be an ordinance providing It would be an ordinance providing for the issuance of $10,770,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2023 of the City of Lake Forest, Lake County, Illinois, for the purpose of financing improvements to the city's Deer Path Park athletic field, including the site work, design, and engineering related thereto, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to Mezzaro Financial, Inc., New York, New York. And again, I mentioned earlier, the interest rate on these 10-year bonds is 2.73%. Questions for
Do you want me to do a brief summary?
You're going to do a little presentation, aren't you? I'm sorry.
Very brief summary. So as noted, this bond issue does contribute $12 million of the total $16.4 million for the Deer Path Park Improvement Project, as we noted a couple weeks ago when you did first reading for the bond ordinance. We have a few differences in current bond market that makes this a little unique. So we are trying to generate $12 million of bond proceeds net of issuance costs for this project. However, with the current bond market, Spear Financial has strategically structured this bond issue because it carries a 5% coupon. So that is more attractive to investors and potential purchasers of the bonds. But what that means is that is that the bonds are going to sell at a premium. So they're going to sell at more than par, and that's going to lower the amount of the bond issue. And so we were forecasting an estimate of $10,825,000 in par value, but that was subject to change based on the bids received during the auction. What that does conversely is then drives down the net interest cost because of the premium in the purchase upfront. Debt service on this issue will begin in December of 2023 because we are past the levy process for this year. The initial debt service payment will be funded $350,000 from the property tax levy you approved in December, and the remainder will come from the fiscal year '23 TIF Fund Note repayment that would typically go to the capital improvement fund, but instead we're going to transfer it to the '23 bond issued debt service fund, and that's estimated at $900,000. So those dollars will be ready and available for the the principal and interest payments. Subsequent years, the debt service will be added to the debt service property tax levy. As was already mentioned earlier this evening, Moody's on April 12th did assign a AAA rating to this issue. We provided copies of the press release as well as the full credit opinion that was issued by Moody's last Wednesday. Read some fantastic quotes that I was going to read, but I I do think that it was very nice to see specific mention of the the city's approach to public safety pension funding noted specifically in both the press release and the credit opinion this year. So very validating, very complimentary of the city. This takes a long time. This doesn't happen in a year. This is the really positive and conservative financial management of the city that's gone on for a long time because Moody's is really looking at trends. They look back at historical information to see whether the city's financial position is improving. And I would just note that the AAA rating is not only the the best rating the city can achieve, but having the outlook stable is the the very pinnacle, the very highest rating that they can provide on this debt. So a competitive auction was held this morning, an online auction. It runs about 15 to 20 minutes, very fascinating to watch because we had nine bidders submitting a total of 54 bids on this. So once they fell to number two, they were resubmitting to try to to win and have the lowest bid on this bond issue. So lots of activity. Dan Forbes from Spear Financial is here to answer all of your difficult questions, but he has noted that, you know, this was a very high level of interest given recent sales that Spear Financial have done. So I think we can feel very comfortable that we got a very competitive market rate on the sale today. As noted, the successful bidder was Mezzaro Financial. And I just wanted to also note the bonds maturing December 2031 and later are callable beginning December 15th of 2030, so there is a call provision. And as you know, we've taken advantage of those on other issues with lower interest rate environments. We can reissue and take advantage of a lower interest rate. I included on the table here just a comparison of the estimate that was provided to you in February that was developed by Spear Financial and then the actual results that we received this morning. Quite remarkable how on point Dan was in his February estimates. He forecast a par value of $10.8 million. We came in at 10.77, so it was resized to take advantage of that slightly lower interest rate than anticipated. True interest cost forecasted at 2.823. We got it at 2.730. Annual debt service estimated at $1,282, comes in about $1,276 per year. And then the total principal and interest over the life of the issue, about $63,000 less than than projected in February. So quite remarkable that we were that on point. And again, that 2.73, very, very attractive and good in this in this environment. So I do want to just acknowledge the significant contributions of both Spear Financial as the city's financial advisor, but also Chapman and Cutler as bond counsel. You received this afternoon, hopefully via email, the revised bond ordinance with all the low bid information inserted into the bond ordinance so that you had that complete ordinance also re-titled to reflect the 10.77 instead of the 10.825. And then Spear Financial does prepares the preliminary official statement, structures this bond issue, manages the auction this morning, works with the bidders, just does a significant amount of work on behalf of the city. And so I'd like to thank Dan for his hard work on this issue. And with that, I won't read again that long title of the bond ordinance, but again, we are seeking second reading and final approval on the bond ordinance issuing $10.77 million in general obligation bonds. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay. Public comment? Anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? Okay. I would then entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor.
Seconded.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Rommel.
I'm going to vote no, but I do want to congratulate the staff on your work and on a successful sale today, and I do think that it speaks very well of the staff and your efforts. But you know that I have not been in favor of this project all along. In fact, I would have liked to have seen it go to a referendum, which it possibly would have had we not been home rule. And so I'm voting nay, but congratulations nonetheless.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
While I respect Alderman Rommel's position, I feel at this point this is the fiscally responsible thing to do for the city, so I vote aye.
Excellent. Six one, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. This is a fabulous execution. I want to extend my thanks to the Spear Financial team. And given the volatility of the debt markets over the last several months, to be that close on your estimate is pretty extraordinary. I may call you when I'm looking for advice when I'm not the mayor anymore. So so thank you very much. Okay. Next is items for omnibus vote consideration. We have 11 today. This meeting is just
I'm sorry, Mayor. We actually have one item.
Did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry. My my sheet's a little Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Okay. Next item is consideration of an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2022, and ending April 3, 2023. First reading and if desired by the City Council, final approval. I apologize for that slip up.
No problem at all. Thank you, Mayor. Your panelists presented at the City Council Finance Committee meeting immediately preceding this one. This is just a housekeeping item that adjusts the supplemental or adjusts the appropriation ordinance for any fund budget that is anticipated to exceed the appropriation ordinance. This is related to fiscal year '23, the year that we are completing. So the liability insurance fund is projected to go over budget due to an increase in the contribution for Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. This is the cooperative through which we get our liability, property, auto, and workers' compensation insurance. Because that insurance contribution did exceed budget, we're seeking a supplemental appropriation of $150,000, and that will be funded from very healthy reserves in the liability insurance fund. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Elizabeth. Any public comment? Anybody in the public that would like to comment on this supplemental appropriation? Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance making a supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year beginning May 20, May 1, 2022, and ending April 30, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
No. I mean, I'm sorry. Hey, yay, I'm still back at the other vote. Sorry.
You've been thinking about that no vote for a long time. Can't get it out of your head.
No, I can't.
Seven yays, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now I get to go through the 11 as if I didn't have enough reading to do tonight. First is approval of April 3, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes. Second, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the City of Lake Forest for Lake Forest High School Foundation. That's an approval by motion. Approval of a three-year contract with Leinbarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson LLP for collection services. Fourth, approval of a fiscal year '24 administrative directives updates. Five, approval to engage the Driscoll Firm LLC, Kennedy and Madonna LP, LLP, SL Environmental Law Group PC, Douglas and London PC, Levin, Papantonio, Rafferty, Proctor Buchanan, O'Brien, Barr, Mogi PA, and Taft, Statineus, and Hollister LLP for legal services. That was a good one. Six, consideration of a contribution to the History Center in the amount of $75,000 to support the Garden Initiative project. Seventh, approval of two items for the Lake Woodbine Bridge. First, approval of an Illinois Department of Transportation resolution appropriating an additional $150,000 of a total of $400,000 in rebuild Illinois funds to be used for Phase II design engineering services of the Lake Woodbine Bridge. Second, approval of Phase II design engineering services for the Lake Woodbine Bridge project to H.W. Lochner, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $380,058 to include a 5% contingency in the amount of $19,003 for a total cost of $399,061 in addition to authorization to complete additional paperwork as required by IDOT related to work on this project. Eighth, award of the low bid for the 2023 patching and resurfacing project to J.A. Johnson Paving Company and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $1,595,000. Ninth, award of a proposal for ADA Transition Plan Design Services to LCM Architects in the amount of $50,000. Tenth, consideration of the waiver of permit fees related to the construction of a monument in Veterans Park on the southeast corner of Deer Path and Green Bay Road. An approval by motion. And eleventh, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board. First reading and if desired by the City Council, final approval. Are there any items here that any member of the council would like removed or taken Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the 11 omnibus items as presented.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Seven yays, zero nay. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Last item on our agenda tonight before adjournment is any comments or items for discussion by council members. Alderman Morris.
Thank you. I have a comment for Director Asserniac. As I as I was listening to your comments about the hometown, I was thinking about over the six years, she helped get the renovate, total renovation of the Deer Path Inn, which is now a national award-winning property in Lake Forest. She's helped bring two world-class restaurants to Lake Forest and all the other restaurants you referred to, and concluding today with the hometown restaurant, which is remarkable because everyone's been asking, how do we get more restaurants in town? And I think it's to your credit that we've gotten a lot of those in place. So thanks very much. It's been great.
Along with all kinds of other things that have made this town a much better-looking and better place to live over a long period of time. So thank you, Kathy. I agree. I completely agree. Alderman Gashkarian.
I have one comment, and it's regarding the mayor's opening comments in discussing the bond ordinance and the credit opinion of Moody's and how Lake Forest does have the lowest tax rate, not only in the county but in the area. And I think this council and previous councils and previous mayors have prided themselves on being good fiscal stewards of taxpayer dollars. But I think it's really important for us to consider, though, the other side of the equation, the incredible services we have here. I mean, really, that's what makes Lake Forest so special. It's one thing to live in a in a town or a state where you have low tax rates, but what are you getting in return for that? And and I think that it really is what what makes Lake Forest a pinnacle community. And I think we can look directly to our staff all across the board, from from city manager all the way through to the newest employee. I think we we really need to make sure that we acknowledge that. And, you know, I'm proud to be just part, a small, small part of it. And I want to acknowledge all my fellow aldermen that are sitting here with me now and previously and the tremendous job they've done in supporting our staff, and I thank them. And just one last final note, I want to thank Alderman Novit for acknowledging what the vote was on the board, bond ordinance. And I do acknowledge that Alderman Novit and Rommel had different opinions about how that should have gone, but I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your input on those issues. So thank you very much. I do appreciate your perspectives. Thank you.
Alderman Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate how wonderful the ward meetings have been going. I can certainly say fourth ward. It's really exciting to connect with the residents. And after coming onto this council, that was actually my first in-person ward meeting because of COVID. And so I so enjoyed the opportunity and wanted to give a shout out to all of the staff for both participating by being there and a special shout out to Dana and Reagan for their assistance in the presentation preparation. You really make our job easy, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, if that concludes the comments, I would move on to adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.
Have a great evening.
Have a great evening.